All right, we're gonna call the committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tuzinski.
Here.
Trustee Ty.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and collective bargaining matters.
So, second.
Move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Ty. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tuzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Yes, motion carried. Okay, we're going to move on. First presenter is Maggie Jarrett. She's going to be, she has a couple items she wants to bring. Maggie, do you need a table, anything like that?
No, I've got it. How's this? Oh. This is probably fine. Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I've brought two resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution is establishing a complete streets policy for the village. And complete streets are streets that can be safely traveled across, upon, and alongside for all users regardless of their age, ability, or mode of travel. So this complete streets concept, it really acknowledges that streets are not just for cars or vehicular travel, but should be safe places for pedestrians, bicyclists, and folks who are traveling via transit, like the pace bus. So I think most folks would agree with those concepts. So why do we need a policy? I want to present to the group tonight that a complete streets policy is a way for the village to establish or formalize its commitment to creating a healthy, safe, and connected village that supports high quality of life for all of its residents. The quality of life aspect is really important. You know, last week, we convened a focus group represented by all the departments in the village. We also had trustee Brewer there to provide input as well. But we did some workshop, book shopping around vision statements for a complete streets policy. And so that's, I think, captured well in the resolution before you this evening. The policy also ensures that we consider all modes of travel anytime there is a reconstruction project of a roadway or proposed new roadway. So the policy, I want to be sure that this is clear, the policy, it does not require all complete streets elements to be included in every roadway project because we know that that's not always appropriate. For example, on an expressway or a freeway, we don't want people traveling by foot there anyway, so we wouldn't incorporate those sort of pedestrian elements. It just doesn't make sense. We also want to make sure that it's only included when budgets allow. So what this policy sets forth is a vision for how complete streets elements can be incorporated into roadway projects. It sets forth the exemptions, so when context does not support for bicyclists or pedestrians, those elements of the roadway do not need to be accounted for. But it builds in the trigger for this conversation, so that when it is appropriate, when budgets allow, we are thinking about safe travel for folks who are on foot, on their bicycles, and traveling via transit. It's also important to note that having a policy, a complete streets policy, makes the village more competitive for grant funding for transportation infrastructure projects. More and more communities, particularly in the Southland, are adopting complete streets policies that make this sort of commitment. And we will all be receiving more points on our state and federal grant applications for having this policy in place that says, "We want to consider the needs of all roadway users, not just folks traveling by car." So that's the first resolution, and I want to briefly review the second, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. The second resolution is outlining an agreement between the village and South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. We will be applying for STP funding this month. That's the Surface Transportation Program. There are a number of projects related to pedestrian connectivity, intersection improvements, and also road resurfacing. Because the village is considered a high-need community, we are eligible for 100% of funding, meaning we wouldn't need to put a local match up of 20%. We do need to pass a resolution, though, that says we would enter into an agreement with South Suburban Mayors and Managers to utilize the funding available to make up that match. So that's what you see before you in this second resolution. So these are two resolutions, both related to some of the upcoming funding proposals that the village will be submitting, related to implementation of the comprehensive plan and its specific roadway and transportation needs and priorities. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about either complete streets or the agreement between Sauk Village and South Suburban Mayors and Managers to utilize the credits and make up that local match.
I have a question about the complete streets policy. So it says we have to have a complete streets committee. What are we gonna select those people involved in that committee?
That's right, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. You know, the group that we convened last week that included representation from all departments, including public works, community development, police, fire, the village administrator as well, and having a representative from the board, I think that's the making of a great committee. It's a group that can convene regularly when needed, but it will be up to the village to determine, at the administrator's discretion, gathering input from others, of course, what the makeup exactly looks like for that committee. And it can include other members of the public as well, or folks who are, you know, maybe involved in faith-based community, others who are invested in these types of projects could certainly be incorporated in that committee as well. The makeup of that group will be up to the village to determine.
On here, you're also stating that you can, it's for pedestrians to walk in the street also? Do we have an ordinance against that?
Not to walk in the street, I should have clarified. To make sure when any roadway projects are being proposed, either a reconstruction or new roadway, that we're also taking in consideration things like sidewalks on either side, potentially bike lanes if that's appropriate and desired, as well as safe crossing facilities. So looking at striping crosswalks, making sure the right signals are in place to support safe crossing. So we're definitely not encouraging folks to be walking or biking in streets where it's not safe, but looking to take a more full view of the roadways and our ride of way as a whole, and looking at all the elements that might be needed to support safe transit for any type of user.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question?
I just want to comment on the, when we had the meeting, one of the emphasis that we put on was having the street signs. A lot of areas in Sauk Village don't have street signs, so that was one of my things that we should put in. And also, I would love for you to repeat that 100%.
That's right.
Can you repeat that again?
Yes. The village will be eligible for 100% of funding for projects that are selected through SSMMA's Surface Transportation Program. And so, as I mentioned, there will be a number of applications that we're submitting for this call. It's a biannual call, so another call will come around in two more years, but it's a five-year funding program, so we're putting in a lot of applications, you know, thinking ahead to, for example, resurfacing of our roadways. They might be in pretty okay shape in some cases now, but in three years, we want to be sure that funding is there for resurfacing when it's needed. So, yes, it's very exciting that the village will be able to be funded 100% if those projects are selected.
Any other question? So you want this to go on the agenda for next week to be voted on, correct?
That's right. Both resolutions, you'll notice in the second resolution, the agreement between the village and South Suburban Mayors and Managers, there aren't any dollar amounts filled out in that final statement. If we do have the estimates from our engineers in time, we'll put those estimates here. If not, we'll have a broader statement to say we will be looking for these credits to cover our 20% match, and it'll just be a more general statement, but it'll do the job.
Next for both, the complete streets and for the agreement with SSMMA for the programming project.
That's right, correct.
The question I do have, I saw on here, which is great, 2023 Street Project, is that any way in conjunction with the one we're talking about with the county that's supposed to start from the, I guess, the fourth, all the way back to College Grove?
Yes, correct.
So that's part of this?
So we are now funded 100% for the Phase 1 study for that. And so what we've included here is looking ahead to Phase 2. Once we're ready for it, if we've got the funding in place, we'll be able to move very swiftly and keep the momentum going.
So that would be part of this also?
Correct.
Any other question? Madam Clerk? Is that it, ma'am?
Thank you. No, that's it. Thank you all.
Next is the village clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have before you an ordinance amending the Division for the Duties of the Village Clerk that was drafted by our attorneys last week. And this one deals specifically with the protocol for the approval of minutes at the village meeting. Some of it takes into consideration some of the protocol that we talked about about a month ago, others do not. I know that we had asked for the development of process and procedure for the implementation of making certain that we get our minutes done in a timely fashion. And this is a response to the, what is it called? No, not the ordinance, but when we had a FOIA brought against us because of the minutes not being timely, then the Attorney General's Office provided a binding arbitration, and we have to respond how it will be corrected so that minutes are developed and approved in a timely manner. So, the attorneys drafted it. The items that you see in red and lined, those were my recommendations of changes. And in some instances, I may have put the justification forward, and others, I am hoping, though, that as you read through it and you continue to read through it, you would see the relevance of the change that has been made. I do want to draw your attention also to a piece that's going to make the implementation of this a little difficult. If you look at the other document that I gave you, I provided you another chart of our municipal and committee meetings. And on that, I just took from the beginning of the year, and I included today's date. And if you look at that document, since January the 7th, we've had 17 meetings. 17 meetings that require that they be approved within a 30-day period. It's impossible not, it's impossible to have 17 meetings if you have to have them approved within 30 days. Do the math. As I've mentioned to you before, some of our meetings need to be cut, especially like when we look at the special meetings. I think if we look at planning, proper planning to a greater degree, then we will not have as many executive board meetings as well as special meetings. You know, that states, that stature was built because most municipalities and most organizations have one or two meetings per month, not eight to 10, which is what we do in some instances per month. It's not feasible. So as we look at the ordinance that will come before you next week, I'm going to ask that you take that into consideration also. One other thing that I would want to share with you, and that is, I have been asking that this particular Division for the Administration, that it be changed specifically as it look at the responsibilities and duties of the village clerk. This is all in the same area. So to me, again, so that we work smart and not hard, even though I've never been afraid of hard work, but it speaks to proper planning. Why would we do an ordinance now to amend this part of the ordinance, only now to turn around in another couple of weeks and amend it again, that's still doing, dealing with the village clerk and the village clerk's responsibility? So again, I just appeal to you, and you guys don't generally like my appeals, and I'm not understanding why, but I'm going to appeal to you. This needs to be done. We need the process, we need the procedure. I'm all for that. But why change, why amend an ordinance next week and then turn around and amend it again in another two weeks? That's all I'm saying. So, that's what I really just wanted to bring to your attention, because you did get this ordinance from the attorneys toward the end of last week, and it is going, it is proposed to be up for adoption at Tuesday's meeting. Mr. Mayor, I think that I have made considerable changes to that ordinance, so I guess I'm open to hear the responses from the trustees in terms of the changes that I've made, so that by the time I bring it back for vote, it will have in it what they would prefer.
So you're bringing this before the board for them to look at it? And they have any questions and changes before it goes to the next step? This is probably the reason the ordinance is reviewed. If they have any changes, you're asking now could they do so and bring it back to you before it goes to the next step? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. These changes that you made, because I know that our attorneys drafted this ordinance, have you sent this back to the attorney with your changes?
Once again, I like to do things in a specific order, and rather than to take it back to him now, your comments and everything, to me, delays a process, and it is going back and forth. So I would like to, my recommendation would be to send it back after we have the comments of the trustees as well, as well as the comments of the ordinance review committee.
Question? Under section 2, I guess, letter C, number 3, in no time, section 2, letter C, I guess, number 3? It should...
Under recording of the meetings.
Yeah, recording of the minutes. I'm just curious, why did you cross out village clerk in regards to tampering with the recording of the meeting minutes?
Well, when I looked at that, I didn't look at with tampering with, however, I would have to touch it. I would have to be involved with it because it would be the village clerk who would be setting up the equipment as well as the recording in the space where you would be looking at it. So it's not talking about going in, changing the content of the tape, but I have to have some association with it in order to get to you what you would want.
Okay, so yeah, so the way I read it, I read it as if, just to say, if you wanted to erase 10 seconds, you can do that. That's how I read this, so it's a little...
And that's not how I read it. To me, you know, I'm tampering with this right now. I'm touching it, I'm tampering with it. It's because it's being moved. So, you know, if you want to work on qualifying that language a little more, I would invite you to give it some more thought, and then add your input when you add your input.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before? I'm looking at to, I'm looking at a week to submit any changes that any trustee would like to see, and then following that, we can present it to the ordinance review committee, and then they will present it to the, or did you want to come back and discuss after the trustees have any, if they have any questions, maybe I can ask out to that. If they have any questions, I'll ask at the next, at the next committee to find out if they changed anything. If not, then we can take whatever we have here and give it to the review committee and go from there.
Well, the ordinance review committee's gonna meet next Monday, and one of the things we are discussing is the clerk's duties that you had given us at a committee on the hall, I think it was January 7th. So I would suggest if the trustees have changes they want to see...
Okay, then present them before Monday.
Right, and so the ordinance review then would know what they're, what we're looking at, if you're looking to change different things in it. So that's just my suggestion.
So today is Thursday, Tuesday, Friday? If anyone has any changes, by Friday, submit it to the clerk, and then we can go from there, from that point, and then submit it, after that, we can submit it to the ordinance review, and then once the review committee gets it, and the lawyers, we can bring it back with any necessary corrections and talk about it to the next committee, so that'll probably happen to the next committee.
May I ask, though, will this, as well as the ordinance that I asked to be amended, as you said, in January, will they be combined, or are they gonna still be, will they be two separate ordinance?
I can't answer that, but my, my personal opinion, because this is put in place because of the Attorney General's binding opinion, that this should be something separate, because they're asking for us to put something in place. That's my personal opinion.
And...
I can't answer for the committee, because we've not discussed it, but this ordinance was put in place for a specific reason. The other, I understand what you want out there, but again, that's my personal opinion.
If you read the binding, it does not say an ordinance, it said a process procedure, so we really specifically asked the attorney to develop our policy and procedures, not an ordinance. But regardless of how it's pinned, whether it's one ordinance or two, it will still go to the Attorney Generals, and it would solidify, it would satisfy whether what she's, what's being asked of us. So that trustee is not necessarily a reason not to combine two ordinances that's amending the section that specifically deal with the village clerk.
Again, as I stated, that's my personal opinion, as that I think this needs to be separate, but I will discuss it with the committee, and then it'll come before the board.
If you take it that way, and that's the way it will be received, and that's what they're going to say.
Okay, so you're saying, are you saying, Madam Clerk, this is... This says ordinance amended, Division 4. Okay, so then my question is, are you asking this ordinance, this amended ordinance, to be rewritten? If anybody has anything in there to edit this particular one, correct?
I'm asking that they edit that piece, and then I'm also asking, because we're amending the same Chapter 2 that is relative to the village clerk, that we combine the one that her, she and her committee have been working on, because it's still amending the same ordinance and the same chapter. It does not necessarily just make sense to amend it one month and then turn around and amend it again to include, I'm just saying include it all.
You're saying we have two, two separate orders?
To amend this chapter.
No, no, I'm saying right now, you're saying we have two separate...
There will be two. The committee's working on one, that's amending Chapter 2 of the administration, and then this is another one, amending Chapter 2 of the administration of the municipal code. I'm saying, but as, you know what, I've been asking for the, my amendment for more than two years, so I'm gonna just step back from it, because I've been asking for mine for more than two. So long as it gets amended is all that I need. I'll be satisfied with that.
My question is, the ordinance that you're talking about, the other one that the ordinance review committee has, is it similar? Are they gonna do the same thing with Chapter 2?
It's amending Chapter 2, that's what I'm saying. Both of them are amending Chapter 2. Both of them are amending chapter two.
Does it have the same language that this one has, amending chapter two?
No, but because chapter two has basically one sentence in it at the current time or no more than one or two, yeah, one or two sentences. So we're getting ready to add a heft of information to chapter two through amending the chapter and I'm just saying it makes sense to just amend it one time opposed to two times within such a short period of time.
Maybe, because maybe the board doesn't have a copy of vote.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject here? January 7th, the clerk provided information which would be in your packets. You're gonna see a state statute and also what the clerk's duties are. What the clerk is requesting that we list several duties, as to what's in the ordinance now, would say, and I can't remember exactly what it says, so I do apologize, but she wants things added to it. So you would have had it in your January 7th packet. I believe that's when you gave it to us, January 7th is when I saw it, that would be the packet. So that's what the clerk is referring to, that it might say that, well, use it as example that she's a notary, different duties that she performs other than just the minutes. So when she's referring to taking this and combining it with the other of what we have, that's what she's talking about. So you would need to look at what she provided on January 7th in that packet, because it shows a state statute, it shows actually the ordinance of what the clerk's duties, which is very minimal, in other words, taking the minutes, but I don't remember exactly how it's stated. But she's asking to add more things to it, so that's...
So this actually, I'm sorry, this actually adds more to what, that's, it's already on the ordinance and what's in chapter two already, this adds more?
Well, this would add more as to what they're doing.
The duties are, this adds more duties.
Yeah, this is in regards to, to the Attorney General's binding opinion. This, this is basically a reason...
In other words, this complies with what their wishes are.
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm looking, then why don't we, why don't we, since this complies with it, why don't we use this one instead of the one that's there? Why don't we go with this one and amend chapter two according to the...
But what the clerk is stating is she wants to take what she provided on January 7th, adding to her duties, not just this, but there were other duties that, that she wanted added.
And amend it just one time instead of amending it twice.
Right.
So I guess...
She wants, she wants it combined, that's because there's two different things we're talking here.
So the other one's with your committee right now and then this one's gonna be with your committee, maybe not Monday, I don't know, Monday, can you look at this one as well?
We can, but as the, as we were stating, we want the board to look at this, if you have any changes.
Right.
You need to get it in by Friday.
By Friday.
If you do not, because we, our meeting's on Monday.
So if you look at both of those on Monday and then we get it back and vote on it and just change the ordinance once, I think that's, makes everybody happy.
But it won't be voted out the next day at our board meeting because it's gonna have to go to the attorney. This is again, if you have any, and I, I don't know if you want the, the changes submitted to you and sent over to us or if you want it sent over...
I don't mind making the changes and sending them to you, but I think that this is one of those times where if we had Google Docs, it would be perfect because then any and everything, that all the changes would be so relevant and evident to everybody who's making the changes, but I think that we would just have to come up with the process so that you would then know how the changes are, the, you know, maybe a different color ink or something like that. And then by the time it's all said and done, we have to bring it all back to black. So we'll work that piece out offline.
So basically what you're asking for is for the trustees to submit any changes that they have between now and Friday.
Yes, to the clerk.
To the clerk. Okay, you have something else?
I do have another thing.
Are we still, do the trustees have a chance to talk?
Oh, did I ask?
Yeah, and then you went that way.
I'm sorry, I asked, okay.
Yes, I was just trying to wait my time. Okay, according to the Open Meetings Act violation, binding opinion of February 10th, 2020, there's some things I want to point out. Number eight says the language of section 2.06B is clear. A public body has 30 days after a meeting or its second subsequent regular meeting, whichever is later, to approve the meeting minutes. And number 11, it said although the board claimed that it was impossible to approve the minutes in a timely manner because of the frequency of its meetings and staffing shortages, section 2.06B of OMA does not contain an exception to the requirement to approve meetings within 30-day period after a meeting by the public body's second subsequent meeting. First of all, the board did not claim that it was impossible to approve the minutes in a timely fashion. The board just became aware of the fact that there was an OMA violation when, after the binding opinion was placed. So this was, this is inappropriate, I think the whole way that this reads is inappropriate. The board approved the minutes when the board was first presented the minutes, because if the minutes were presented two months late, the board is taking the heat on this, which is why when the OMA says, therefore it is the opinion of the Attorney General that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Sauk Village violated section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act because it did not approve minutes of its September 10th, 2019 regular meeting, September 10th, 2019 special meeting, or the September 17th, 2019 meeting, Committee at the Hall meeting until November 12th, which was after the statutory period for doing so had expired. In accordance with these findings of facts and conclusion of the law, the board is to direct it to develop protocols to ensure that its regular meetings within 30 days are approved or at the second subsequent meeting. So I am not in favor of extending the 30-day period because it would be in violation of point 2.06. We need to get our minutes approved within the 30-day period according to what is on the binding opinion because now it's been placed in the responsibility of the trustees.
Trustee, what are you...
Excuse me, you're out of order, Madam Clerk, this is my time.
Madam Clerk, hold on just a second.
But you know, it is 9:15 and she's talking about, take it up with the Attorney General. There's no place in the ordinance. You're just reading stuff that the Attorney General stated, the Attorney General stated that. That's not in the ordinance, so why?
Mr. Mayor, please, if you know that she is out of order...
I know that I'm out of order, you don't have to tell me, but I just know that what you're reading makes no sense. You're just taking up time.
It makes no sense because the Attorney General said...
I have to...
She took the floor from me.
You're saying that you can't do what the Attorney General said now.
Do you want to go into recess?
No, I don't want to go into recess, but I'm gonna say this.
I'm not asking you.
No, but I'm just saying.
I am not asking you, Madam Clerk.
Right, but she's wasting time talking about, would you guys just please be nice?
I'll order.
Just be nice.
I'll order.
Just be nice, residents, that's all I'm asking of you. Be nice.
Okay, we can be here all night.
No, I'm not gonna be here all night.
I mean, if you wanna continue to do this, the very, the very next time a person does not recognize another person, I would ask for a 10-minute recess.
Whatever you have to do.
Whatever, because I'm not...
Whatever you have to do, because I don't want her to read something for 10 minutes that makes, you know, that's not germane to the ordinance. It doesn't have any, it has no bearing on the ordinance.
Madam Clerk.
This is crazy.
Trustee finished what she was saying, if you have something to say after that, but to interrupt, all it's gonna do is what it's gonna do right now. It's got, no, no, it's not, arguing together doesn't solve nothing. We can all sing together, but we can't talk together. Arguing back and forth, you're gonna come back to the same spot where you were at when you went around the corner, still coming back. So if you guys wanna continue to do that, I will ask for a recess and we'll, we'll be here all night, because this doesn't make sense, because you're not, you're not respecting one another, you don't have to like one another, but you gotta respect one another. And if you feel, there we go, but, but you have to respect, if you want to...
Can we call for recess? Whatever. I'm out of order.
If you don't want to respect the person, then just be quiet.
No, I'm not...
Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna go through that, Madam Clerk. We're not gonna, Madam Clerk...
Father's mine.
Madam Clerk, I'm, I'm, we're not gonna go back...
I have to thank Jesus and I think that I should do it again, all of you on notice of it.
Madam Clerk, you spoke many times about taking the meeting over. Please listen to my direction. Please listen to mine. I'm saying that if we outburst, continue, we will go into a recess. Simple as that. Okay then, Madam, I'm sorry, Trustee Williams, I understand what you're saying. I'm looking in here to see, I didn't see anything about a 30-day, I, I didn't see anything here about a 30-day being amended or anything being changed. That's why I was asked, if there's something that you want changed, put it in writing and, and present it.
If you look at...
All right, then can you put that in writing? Madam, trust me, if you can put that in writing and say that you, that you do not want this taken out, put it in writing, that's all we're asking. But to continue to discuss back and forth is not gonna solve it. If you have, and I asked that clearly, if you have something, you got till Friday to put it in the writing, give it to the clerk, and the clerk can either bring it back to the board, which he should, and then move on, and there's, because you may get more than one person, so she has to bring it back, so everybody that, that wanted to change something can be, can be put into the ordinance, because this is not gonna be done overnight. But we're not gonna sit here and go back and forth, because that's what, that's what, that's what people want you to do and we're not doing that. This is a board meeting, conduct business, not argue. You wanna argue, wait till the board bees over, we can argue on the streets somewhere. But we're not, we're not going to go back and forth. If you have something that you want to change, put it in writing and you got between Tuesday and Friday, you give it to the clerk, if you, and then she's gonna bring it back to the board to let everyone know what the changes that were asked by the board. At that time, if your change doesn't come in there or whatever the case may be, then you can say something then. But that's why, to try to alleviate this back and forth, what you do is put whatever change you don't like or do like or wanna see in here. That's it.
Can I have, can I have the floor back? Because I had it and it was taken away from me.
I'm, I'm serious.
It was taken away from me.
Okay, but you both, you're guilty too.
Mr. Mayor.
You're guilty too.
Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking. I had the floor.
You didn't say that you were out of order.
I had the floor.
You didn't say you were out of order.
The floor was taken away from me.
You didn't say that, okay.
No.
I'm telling you now, if it gets to another one, I will stop.
Mr. Mayor, can I finish my, I had the floor.
Go ahead.
You took the floor away from me.
Why didn't you say that? Go ahead, trust me.
Okay. Because when Trustee Williams talks, we need to be quiet. When Trustee Williams talks, all rules go out the door. The copy of the OMA violation is on the back table, feel free to read it for yourself and if and when this ordinance is approved, you will be able to see that it does, it does actually apply to section 120 slash 2.06B. I'm not speaking out of line, I'm speaking the truth. Thank you, I'm done.
Anybody else have anything to say about the corrections that can be made on this particular ordinance and this amendment? As I stated, if you have any corrections, please put them in writing and give them to the clerk. Does anybody else have anything else to say? The next thing, you have something on here about approving, I think, approving copy of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I'm before you talking about that copier that we had in there that was purchased in 2016. I communicated with the company because the equipment fails us on a continuous basis. And I discovered though, that we still have about a four to five-year life in that copier that we have and so it was not recommended that we replace it, but just keeps, make certain that it is maintained on a regular basis. As we looked at different options though with the new copier, it was decided that maybe the best way would not go with the new copier and to take the advice of the establishment, but still I would come to you and make an appeal that when that copier was put into action in 2016, they did not, the people who purchased it did not buy some attachments that could make it more user-friendly as we are using it. And so one thing that I would like to ask that we consider for the copier is the attachment that allows you to staple your pages together. The cost of the attachment that would allow stapling will be anywhere between an extra $30 to $45 a month for the remaining life of the copier that we have at this point. And that's what I wanted to bring to your attention before I asked the company to write out an agreement so that we would know that it's something that we're interested in and we would not be wasting the time of the company by presenting us an agreement on the front end and then we decide. I thought that I would bring it to you first to make a determination whether or not that's something that we think would be beneficial to us.
Any other question?
I mean, I would just say, and I'm not doing the stapling, but that seems a little excessive to me. I know it's not, it's their fee, they can charge that because I'm using their equipment. I just don't see the use of $40 a month for a stapler. It, it just, to me, again, I'm not stapling, I just don't think it's worth it. That's just my opinion.
Any other question?
I have a comment, well, a question. Ms., Madam Clerk, you indicated that the copier had the capability of stapling, but it's just not working?
No, it has the capability. When they built it, we just got the basic unit. In order to have the copier, just like to know the three-hole punch that we were attempting initially, it can do that too and I just figured, no, we didn't need the three-hole punch. But it can do the copying, but we would need to get the attachment that will allow us to put the staples in so that it can staple. And it can staple large booklets as well as what I usually do when I provide you your packets. And to trustee, the amount of staples that we use is quite considerable and then when you also take into consideration the time element of manually stapling all of the documents that you get on a weekly basis, that the $30 to $45 would maybe justify.
Any other question? Does anybody have any objections? That's what I'm saying, they have the objections because she stated that you would bring the quote back. Okay. Thank you. Next item, Trustee Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think six weeks ago, maybe two months ago, I presented to you guys a lengthy document titled Finance Policies and Procedures that I wanted to present to you guys and hopefully we could pass. So I did receive some comments back from Trustee Todd, which, thank you for those. I did incorporate them, well, I wrote them down and I have no problems with any of the changes that you were asking about. Trustee Juzinski, she would get back to me with the few, so thank you for those and I'll just continue to wait on those. But anybody else I haven't heard from, just wanna see where we stand with those. This is a document that I feel like we should pass and also, and actually with the ordinance that we just passed earlier about the forensic audit, this is something that they were actually looking for, they want to see finance policy procedures. So even though we didn't have it at that point in time, at least we can say, hey, well, this is what we have passed since then and to make it seem like that won't be a ding on us, hey, we're working towards this, we're trying to correct this. So I just kinda wanna see where we are and just go down the line and see, do we have any questions? And if, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind if I start on the left with Trustee Williams and we just work our way down, because it's something I really wanna pass and I think that we should pass.
Okay, there's several things that I know we've talked about in the past, but I didn't see a rewritten policy or an updated policy since the last time that we talked. I know my pages are kinda out of order because I was going back and forth on the policy, but I do know that we talked about a PO system. I was wondering where we've gotten with the purchase order system, because on this, on page 30... Because on this, on page thirteen, it says purchase orders are required for seventy-five hundred dollars or more. I think that's entirely too high, I think purchase orders should be required for even two thousand, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars. Because especially and particularly with the administrative office supplies, we've exceeded our budget two or three times the amount that we originally set in for that budget, but having a purchase order at a lesser amount would kind of get that department a little bit of knowledge that we're getting a little bit above and beyond what our original intention was. And the other thing was, in F, under pricing requirements, I know, I believe we talked about not doing verbal quotes, but doing written quotes, that it's important that everything be in writing, so we have some type of backup. And number three, on that particular pricing requirements, it says that my notes are, and I thought we talked about this before, that a department head can choose, or can a department head choose, and submit afterwards, as long as it's within the budget, and it's the lowest bid. So, on four, right below there, my handwritten note is how many quotes, and does it need to be in writing? Now, I do believe that we talked about that, so I'm not prepared to come up with all of my changes at this time until I see what changes are being made, so we can address this as a policy that's been taken into consideration with some changes. So, another thing is, on the emergency purchases, how is the board notified whether or not there's been approval of emergency purchases? I don't think that that's addressed in there, and I think that we need to lock down the fact that it is the board and the finance department, and not the, um, there's one thing written in here where it refers to somebody other than the finance.
Probably the budget officer, is probably what you're talking about.
Is that what it, yes.
Yeah, so, so, sorry to cut you off, but Trustee Todd had all the same points that you had.
Well, we talked about this before, I believe.
No, well, I mean, so I didn't wanna go back and make changes, and then I hadn't heard from you or anybody else, then make more changes. So, Trustee Todd did ask about the budget officer, which I would change to finance director. In regards to the purchase order amount being lower to twenty-five hundred, I think that's fair. But also, what I will say to that is that, in order to see where we are, you know, every month, Mister Finch provides us with a budget actuals. So, we should be receiving one February pretty soon. That's gonna tell us how far we are to that budget, if we exceeded already or not, and are we in good standing. That's gonna be your main focus, and that's what we're gonna call out, hey, we ordered too many supplies. So, this policy is just that, it's a policy, but that's what we should be looking at, and then that's what we should take action on, hey, village administrator or finance director, let's slow down on the supplies. In regards to the emergency purchases, that's on page fourteen, that was another one of Trustee Todd's questions, and I think this says that the mayor should notify the village board as soon as practical following the emergency. That's the last sentence in section H, so the mayor is supposed to let us know when there's emergency purchase. And I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay.
So, and Trustee Todd has some more questions, which I have no problem adding her language to those, and Trustee Todd, just to answer one more of your questions. So, a few sections in the back kinda pertain to investments. So, Village, we don't really have any, Miss Palley doesn't have any investments per se, so therefore, they don't apply to us. However, if we ever do decide to get investments, that's when those will apply. But so for right now, they're just there just to be there, but they don't apply to us for right now.
So, I know you wanted to answer my questions as I was saying them, but on page ten, under purpose, this policy is designed to be a fluid document and will be modified from time to time. I think we should insert a port upon board approval there, because it doesn't specify how it's going to be changed or modified, to conform with changes in legislation, so the board would have to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, and on the very last paragraph there, the mayor or village administrator, it says should add, the board of trustees shall be the final authority.
Yeah, so that was another one of her suggestions as well, so I would add corporate authorities.
I guess we both think alike there. I think I have one more that I wanted to point out. If I have anything else, I'll let you know, but at that, right now, that's what my main concern is.
So I guess my question is, can you let me know by Friday? Because I wanna know from the board, and I still wanna go through the rest of the trustees, is there something that we can put on the agenda next week to vote on? If you guys are comfortable, now, we haven't gotten down to the rest of the trustees, but I just kinda wanna just put that out there, so Trustee Bell, do you have anything?
No, I'm with the consensus of the changes they had there.
Okay. Trustee Jazinski, I know you said you would get back to me.
Yeah, Trustee Grant, thank you for getting back to me, you answered a lot of my questions. The only thing that I really stand here is the issue with the pricing requirements.
I think, I think anything from number three, four, and five should get board approval and have three bids with it. That would be the only thing that I see, other than that.
So to answer your point on those, Trustee Todd suggested that she wants written quotes on one, two, three, four, and five, which I feel like that's fine, and then the three verbal quotes, I mean, the three written quotes as well. So, she did ask for that, that is on my notes right here, so I think that might solve your concern.
Yeah, and you answered the rest of my questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we get to Trustee Brewer, I just wanna say, Trustee Brewer, this takes no power from the board. I mean, nothing changes, this is actually just a document put into place that says that we have some kind of guidelines to follow. We don't have anything like that now. It's not to go and say, we can go and approve, or the mayor or the village administrator or the finance director can go and approve something without coming through us first. Everything is still gonna be on council paperwork every two weeks. Things will still flow through the board as they should, as they do now, so nothing changes. This is actually just putting something on paper to say, this is a good faith, this is what we're gonna do, and this is what we're gonna try to follow.
Well, thank you for that information, but however, I'm still going back to page three. In the Illinois House statute, it refers to the majority of the votes of the corporate authority. However, if you go through this document, it always changes to the mayor, the finance director, and everybody else, and it seems like the trustees are only on here as an afterthought. But I haven't put in all my concerns here, and I wanna send them to you, because I would love for you to address each one of them individually. This is fifty-nine pages, and I think I have, you know, quite a few that you need to look at. One of the major things that I have is the budget officer. I know you said you was gonna change that, I'm in agreement with that. But the, also, it has some somewhere here where it has the signing authority for the mayor. I'm not quite sure.
You know what page it is?
No, I had to go through, I see, I didn't write my questions down, I thought we wouldn't be able to talk to them. So what I'm gonna do is I'll send you my concerns, and then maybe look at them. Especially with page three, it refers to the majority of the corporate authority, and again, I'm gonna emphasize that when you look through it, it always says the mayor does this, the mayor does that. It's the corporate authorities who's supposed to be making these kind of decisions on how the money is spent. So, I mean, I just have, I'm just not comfortable with these questions.
I do understand you're gonna try and about adding the corporate authorities. I thought, and I could be wrong, that everywhere where it said the mayor, I added village administrator and or finance director and the village board. If I didn't, I will go back and take a look at that, because the village board should be included.
No, it's included in some places, but you know, the majority of them have been left out, and most of them, to be true.
So if you could send me those, I'd definitely address them, and then I would like to send out a final copy, maybe over the weekend. That's if you guys are willing to put it on the agenda next week, and I think Trustee Todd, I think you're the last one.
To read fifty-nine pages over the weekend.
Well, I mean, no, actually, I just redlined the changes that were made, so that way, therefore, you don't have to read.
Over the weekend.
Oh, okay.
And also, since this has, refers to Illinois State statute, I do believe this, I mean, it's my personal opinion, that this should go to the attorney. Because if you look at page three, that sets the tone for the rest of the document that you're trying to approve, and it refers to the corporate authority. But I really think it should go to the attorney once it's changed, once, you know, we finalize and send it to the attorney. Yeah, before we vote on it, because Illinois State statute is clear, and it always refers to the corporate authority.
That's fine, so Mister Mayor, just as a heads up, once all the changes are back, it's okay, I'll send it to the corporate, I mean, the corporate council, and they can, I guess, glance it over and give their blessing or not blessing, and we can make whatever changes they recommend.
I mean, I, okay, it looks like this, it's, I don't know how many changes the trustees have, but it seems like some has a few, some has a lot. I don't know if you have that much time to do that, but between now and then.
Well, no, in that case, I'll ask the attorney, well, I should bring it back to the board for the final, and then send it to the attorneys, and then it'll go before the board for approval.
Okay, that makes sense.
I have something. Are you finished, Trustee Brewer?
Uh, hold on now, I'm trying to look for the last one.
And as I keep going over this, on page five, under L, it'll show, it says counties are cooking will, you wanna remove will.
Gotcha.
Also, where it says county clerk filing, it says the village shall file a certified copy. Does not the clerk do you file the certified copy of the budget? Should it read clerk?
Well, like.
Does the clerk file it?
Generally, it's the finance director, because I've been here.
Okay.
That's just another one of those that, in the ordinance is, and all of that, it says the village clerk, but the village clerk does not perform that duty.
To ask my question, on page thirty-one is not on my page, but it says, who is the financial advisor? It's not clear, who is that? And also, on page, it's not, thirty-one is not on here, you know, but it's right after thirty, and it, you gotta put thirty-one in there. It says down at the bottom, financial advisor.
So, our financial advisor, however, but this section is in regards to investments, which doesn't pertain to us, we don't have investments, but to answer your question, that's who it is.
Okay, and let me see.
I mean, just for essence of time, can you send me your questions by Friday, and that way we can just kinda?
Well, I mean, those are the few that I can, but I am gonna send you my questions and my concerns about it. But just to let you know, I just maybe wanna think about that before, you know, I send you that, because I didn't wanna send you something that, you know.
So, Madam Clerk, we have this back on the agenda for two more weeks, so that we can look at it one last time, send it to the attorneys, and then pass for approval following meeting, or whatever, thank you.
Okay, the next one would be myself. I've been, and I was asked about this earlier, looking at getting some quotes to do some infrastructure repairs throughout the village. It's a little costly, but it's something that needs to be done. And as soon as I get finished with all this, I'm gonna give it to the trustees so they can look at it. But it's basically seven streets that I asked Kevin to look at, well, he gave me the seven streets. I didn't ask him, I didn't give him the seven streets. Seven streets that he says is in disrepair, some of them haven't been touched since nineteen fifty-seven. So, and then, there's a few there, then there's a few to nineteen seventy, and then nineteen ninety-five is one. So, I asked him to compile a list, and these are just for streets. These are not sidewalks, these are streets, but when you do the streets, you have to do the handicap capability on the different corners. But it came down to with concrete, so some of these places, we have to rip up the apron, or rip up the sewer outside of the drainage that goes into the street sewer, that's concrete. So without, without concrete, it was five hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Excuse me, that's to do seven, seven different areas. With the concrete, it'd be six hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Now, you can always augment some of that, you don't have to do it all, but these are some of the really, really bad ones that need to be done. This is not including the, as again, does not include the sidewalks. The second thing was asked of me earlier, and I said I would bring it up, is about the trees. And we had quotes, Kevin again went out and got a quote, and also, he, I guess he asked the guy that he had insurance to knock the trees out, which is very, very important, because depending on what those trees are, some people have power lines right there. And we don't have the equipment to do a lot of that, and some of the trees are large diameters. So, to make, to give you, to show you, just to give you a quick analysis, to do the trees, he's talking around two thousand dollars for the large, the largest tree that we have. The smallest one, you can low end, the low end is six hundred dollars. Now, he said that they're in certain areas, but we still have close to two hundred and fifty trees that he's been working on them, but we still have two hundred and fifty trees, and some of these trees, two hundred and fifty trees. And some of them are in areas where they're dead, well, all of them are dead, but they could be a hazard. And so we try to get on that as soon as possible. So that's something that we'll be bringing, once I get all of the estimate quotes from him. And also, we're gonna try to see if there's anything else out there to do that, and bring it back to the board, so we can get started on this early in spring. You know, I've asked, and I even talked to him, and he said that especially the trees, we cannot, the board cannot, I'm sorry, the public works cannot do the large ones. That would stay, and then also with the streets, we don't have anything, we don't have any equipment to redo a street. And some of these streets are really, really bad. So we're looking at probably close to, if we do everything that's on there, you're talking about close to almost a million dollars. But it could be trimmed down, so that's something I will bring to the board to let us get started on this. And it does not have, it's gonna be bidded, but it's also, you gotta understand, it's not MFT or CDVG money that's going to be using this, we're gonna use the reserve money that we had to, that we got from the sale. So that's why I was saying before. But again, I'll bring it to the board, it's up to the board if they want to, how far they wanna go to do this, but we need to get started on this now, and these two places that we talked to can get started on it as soon as we get them the okay to do it. So, I will tweak this out, so you can get a clean copy, because I wrote over some of these things, and I'm giving it to, I'm putting it in your mailbox before the end of the week. And if you have any questions about it, please feel free to let me know, and then we can, and I just wanted to be voted on, that we can go forward, and then we'll go from there. And Kevin will be the project person that's gonna be overseeing all this, because we need, public works needs to make sure that all is done correctly. So that's what I was bringing to the board, and like I said, some of this, we, you know, you may not be able to do it all, but we need to get some of this done, especially the trees.
I have a question. Mister Mayor, you said you had seven streets outside of the ones that the block grant is gonna address, and the MFT, this is seven streets?
This is seven streets that need to be addressed. See, what happens with the block grant and the MFT, or that project that we do every year, if they don't send us any money, we can't do anything, because it is CDVG and block grant money. They're not, we didn't get anything this year from the block grant. CDVG, we didn't get anything, so therefore, the only projects we gotta be doing are projects that we can do with remaining part of the, I mean, the MFT money that we have, and those are just small projects. What I wanna do is, I'm not trying to do, I'm trying to do the streets right now, and get the streets done, like I stated, some of these streets haven't been done since nineteen fifty-seven, and they need, they need to be, they need to be upgraded.
What, what, what streets, areas?
I'm gonna give you all this, I'm not gonna go down the whole list, but it's, I think it's one, two, three, three from nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen sixty, fifty-seven. But anyway, there's three, then you got some from nineteen seventy-three, some from nineteen seventy, and then there's one for nineteen ninety-five. So, but we need, we need to get these done. So, but we need, we need to get these done, the trees, um, Kevin is going to, he didn't put those down, there's too many of them, and, uh, but he knows where they're at, and, uh, whoever, whoever, you know, we get, he's looking at, there was one person here that he had, um, I don't know how familiar they are with it, but he was gonna be, um, coordinating that, where they need to go and start, start cutting them down. So, uh, I guess I stated, I'll get this to the board, uh, the day is to this, so you should have it reached by Thursday, and make sure that, uh, that everything is, because he got this to me today, so make sure that there's nothing else, and make sure that, that everything is, that he gave me is correct, and we can go forth from there, but I just wanted to bring this to the board, and, uh, get the okay to go forward with, uh, taking care of this and getting this done. And then also, the street lights, he told me, we're gonna take that out of MFT, MFT money too, so this is not MFT, so he told me that he would be able to do that out of the MFT. Can't take everything, I gotta take MFT, we only got so much in there, so we need to augment, and we need to do this, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I guess, I guess what will your priority be, to do trees, roads, or a combination of the two?
Combination of the two. Because the trees, yes, but there's, there's streets out here that just, you know, for seventeen, I mean, these, these, some of these streets are really, and a lot of times, they don't get done, because either they're not long enough, or, um, the other ones that were done were worse than these, but there are some of them, and that's why I'm gonna give the list to you guys, so you can drive around and see which ones they are, and see just how bad they are, and, um, but I just wanted to get, you know, um, get started on that, and, um, get them out here to, to get started, and start resurfacing, and also start knocking the trees down.
Question?
Yes.
When you say get started, exactly what do you mean, like actually physically start working?
Yes.
So you said you have two, two bids, is that what I heard you say?
No, I have two, I have one for the trees and one for the street, and, um, that's why I'm trying, I'm trying to wait, I think there's another one that's supposed to be coming, if I get that other one, I'll give it to the, the board, but I wanna get, I wanna get on their calendar now, because spring is getting ready to start, and I'm gonna get on their calendar now to do some of these streets, and these trees, because right now is, you know, and we need to get that, we need, we need to, um, to do that as soon as possible.
But we don't need to go to a bidding process for this, or just gonna?
Not for, this is not CDVG or MFT money, this is.
Right, but just to have.
I'm just gonna bid it, because, you know, I mean, for, for that, you, you should bid anyway, even though, when you spend that kind of money, you should have somebody to say, okay, you know, you put it out there, can you beat this, or whatever, but it's not a requirement, but it has to, it is gonna come for the board.
That's what I meant when I said, you said moving forward, like we're gonna do the work right away, you're actually gonna move forward, taking bids.
Well, no, I'm gonna move forward, that, I wanna, okay, what I wanna do is get the, um, okay from the board to move forward, to get started. I don't wanna get bids, and then we get the bids, and then, oh, wait, then I, what about this, and what about, I need to, when they, if they come in and say, okay, we can take your trees down, fix them out, then I go back to the board, and, well, what about ten, or fifty instead of a hundred, well, no, I need to know, and we need to, uh, if you say that you don't wanna do two hundred trees, the board doesn't wanna do, then tell me how many, and this is what is the cost. Same thing with the streets, but you don't wanna have a person to, and you, you bring that price to, or find out what it is that, uh, they charge, and they charge about how much work they do, that's all contractors. So if they're gonna do one tree, quite naturally, they're gonna charge you more if, if they did ten, and the same thing with anything else, so we can probably get the price down, but right now, this is a roundabout price, I just need to be okay to move forward, to go forward with doing this, and, um, from that point.
You have a question?
Uh, I just wanna make a comment, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have committed ourselves to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the forensic audit, and now, uh, with the seven streets, uh, according to the seven streets outside of the block grant and MFT, you're, you're asking for five hundred eighty-eight thousand more dollars. Am, am I right? Did I?
I mean, and that's with our concrete, with concrete, it's six hundred and sixteen dollars.
And then we want six hundred and sixteen?
Six, six hundred, no, I said with concrete. All of them don't take the concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them, some of them you need to, some of them you don't.
Mm-hmm.
But it's six hundred thousand with, with concrete, as if you go with the seven. Same thing with the trees, the trees, we don't know, it, it may be once, I mean, two fifty, maybe three hundred, but he was telling me it's approximately two hundred and fifty trees need to be taken down. And so with that, he was showing me the price for the low end, the six hundred dollars a tree, and the high end, twenty-two hundred dollars to take that, that was the biggest tree in hell, I guess he must have shown me, showed somebody that. So, yes, that's what I'm trying, that's what I wanted to use it for, yes.
So can I finish my?
I, I thought you were doing.
No, I wasn't, I was, I wanted clarification.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were doing.
That's okay. My next question was under pricing requirements of this budget and finance policy that we've been discussing, we, we make an issue of how we want three written quotes before we do anything. I'm not comfortable, but you say you have one person, you have someone that's ready to get started right away, how come we're not getting three written quotes?
Okay, that's what I, I asked, I didn't ask, I said that I needed to move forward.
Right.
I'm not gonna go get quotes if you don't want this done. If the board doesn't wanna move forward with doing this, what's the use of going to get a quote? But now, if the board wants to move forward with doing this, then yes, we can get more quotes quite naturally.
Yes.
And, and, and have it done, but I need to know first, if that, that's the first process is saying, okay, we're gonna do this. If the board doesn't wanna do it, then why do that? Then why, so that's why, that's why I'm asking, so that's gonna be the first thing that I'm gonna have to put on the agenda for next week, to ask if we can move forward with this, with this project. And hopefully, by between, I'll, I'll get this to you, but if I get any more, if we do have some more, if I get any more, quite naturally, we're gonna bring it to the board, and then let them see it, I mean, it's, because, you know, people are gonna bid on it, but I wanna get on somebody's calendar now, whether than later, because as time goes on, those calendars fill up and the price goes up. Yes, I, I do, first of all, you do.
Actually, uh, I, I just wanted to clarify, you said you want to move forward, you're, I'm not sure what you're putting on the agenda next week. If you're putting on the agenda next week to move forward with a particular company, then you're not taking.
That's not what I said.
Just to move forward with the project.
No, what I wanna do, move forward to doing this project.
Yes, okay, as long as you're.
Now, and that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm saying, I wanna, I wanna, I want to get a, a vote to move forward, it doesn't make sense for me to move forward and, and, uh, get the quotes and then you say no.
Mr. Mayor, um, that's, the question that I had was how to word it on the agenda, and I really think that what you would really want to say is to get approval from the trustees to go out to bid on each one of the projects. That's really the language that would go on next week's agenda. You want to go out to bid.
That's fine, that's fine, I, I just, I don't want, what I don't want is when we do go out to bid, or when we do get the quotes, and we, and they are presented to us, that we didn't, we didn't wanna do that. I don't, I'm not gonna get somebody involved in bidding or giving quotes, and it's not gonna happen, so that's the only thing, so yes, that's fine, to, 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 I go out to bid, okay. No, this is for the street, the streets and for the trees. The lights, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get whatever we have left in MFT, and then MFT comes in all the time. Okay, all right, um, any other questions? Okay, Trustee Todd.
Thank you. Um, board, did you get a chance to look at, the first one is the village-wide spending freeze, and what we added was, well, we removed A, the spending freeze shall be effective until, we don't want that in there. Our committee does not, you can amend this at any time. So we added A to read all department personnel must get pre-approval of essential and non-essential spending from their department head prior to purchase. And B, all department heads are required to work within their allotted budget, in the event the department head is near to exceeding their budget, approval from the finance director or designee is required in writing prior to the purchase. So when it comes to the department personnel, and they have to get pre-approval from their department head, that's an internal control that the department head would need to put into place, but you don't want personnel going out and making purchases and not making their department head aware, because they won't know what's in their budget, their, their department head does, so that's what we've added to this. Are there any questions on this?
So I, I think under section three, letter B, that this says finance director or designee, um, in my opinion, the designee should be probably be the village administrator, uh, 'cause I mean, what it says is, or designee, we don't, who is that? So I think it should be the village administrator, but that's just my opinion.
And tha- and that's fine, and what happens if we, if, at some point, we don't have a village administrator?
We'll be back.
Then you wanna go back, we can amend this?
Yeah, we can amend it.
So you wanted to read finance director or village administrator?
Yeah. Yes.
Questions? Where are emergencies covered? There are times when spending does not need to be done on an emergency basis, is this, any way we can add that?
Would you send me something over with which you wanna see added?
Yes.
Because then we'll put this back on our agenda for Monday.
I will, thank you.
Are you saying, what, okay, because if that's the case, what constitutes an emergency?
That's what I have to know, too. We need to clarify.
So, so I guess that's, you know, another question, so the spending freeze should be implemented in the following manner, and then you can list up other points, so are you saying that, 'cause I see that you took out the phrase or the sentence for all non-essential spending, so does this mean that whatever, I, I guess it's, it's hard to say, like, how do we know what we should, what's a spending freeze or not, right? So if, if the water department has to go out and buy, you know, supplies or boots or whatever, that's, you know, that's essential, that's fine, I guess, it, it's, it's a gray, it's a gray area, like, we don't know what shows up on accounts payable, whether that was essential or not, or whether that was, you know, whether that should have been brought or should have been brought.
I would think that, with the department that's having their budget, they know what's essential, non-essential. One, one of the things with this, with the spending freeze, was, and I'll use this as example, administration, five thousand dollar budget for, uh, office supplies, almost twelve thousand dollars was spent. Who was watching it? How do we know what's essential and non-essential? We went in to look at the bills, and what we're looking at is everything from, we'll say, Amazon, but we didn't get to see the rest of what they were spending. That, whether it's essential or non-essential, my thing, like, again, who was, who was watching the administration spending all that money, whether it was essential or non-essential? So I would say with this, the essential and non-essential, the department heads will know if it's essential, if it's non-essential.
Well, so, yeah, so.
So you want us to determine what's essential and non-essential?
Well, no, because I, I think, I don't think you can do that, I don't think that's like, it's, I don't think that's possible, but I, but I am saying that, so, and just to, just to be clear, so the department head should be responsible for their own departments. In regards to like administration, who's watching in that particular example, office supplies, in my opinion, there should be somebody responsible for each, I guess, department, right? And so for under administration, I would think that would be the village administrator and or the finance director, so they should be watching, they should be, they should be watching that particular department, so when that supplies shoots up, okay, how do we get it under control? So I think that's more so that putting people in charge of their departments, holding them responsible, 'cause I think that just, that supplies thing just kind of, it just fell in a gray area, because there was nobody looking at that one at the time, there was no village administrator, so.
Right.
And if we have one, he should be responsible for that.
Do you want this written in the ordinance?
What, the village administrator?
Do you, what you're saying is, I mean, you're saying that you want the village administrator or the finance director would be in charge of like administration?
No, I, I think, so I think that should be like a given, right? So I think, so, for example, Mr. Wells should be, he should be able to water, I mean, water and sewer, um, Mr. Finch over finance.
Right.
Um, and so on and so forth, but I think that's like a, it goes without saying, so they should be responsible for their own departments, and administration just happens to be a department that, you know, we didn't have a village administrator before, but now we do, so that should be taken care of going forward. So I don't think it needs to be added to this, but I'm just gonna put that out there.
Is it Mr. Finch's charge of administration?
Well, I mean, I would think, like I said, I said either or, I don't know, that's something that him and the DA can discuss. It's the village administrator.
But just as a matter of, Trustee Todd, rather than send it to you, I just wanted to say personally, maybe what we can do, and B, all department heads are required to work within their allotted budget, in the event the department is near to exceeding their budget, or, we could say, near to exceeding their budget, or in the case of an emergency, approval from the finance director or designee is required in writing. Just adding those couple of words, because emergencies do happen.
Right.
It's nothing to do with essential, not essential, but there's emergencies, just to add that in there.
So you wanted, or in the case of an emergency, in writing?
Right, near to exceeding their budget, or in the case of an emergency, approval from the finance director or designee is required in writing.
Right, okay.
That's an email, I mean, it doesn't mean they have to have a letter.
Okay, no.
I, I have a couple.
Sure.
Um, the first thing, um, if, so obviously, you didn't wanna include the mayor, so the mayor doesn't have anything to do with that, um, when it, when it does override, that's in other words, the department heads will go to finance director or to the village administrator, uh, 'cause they have been asking me about that, but that's, that's, that's fine, that's what you wanna do. The second thing is, does that include services? Now, we're talking about department heads or personnel, what about services? When we go over, or we're, we're, we're spending money, more money on different services that are, that we, that we go out and do, is that spending freeze included in that, or is, is it, is it not, is it excluded? I mean, there's some things that, and that's why some of the things are, I've gone over some of the things that we've gone, and excess is some of the services, so therefore, do we continue to do that, that doesn't have to be watched or whatever, we can just continue to, to use the services? Who's gonna watch that? We were talking about the, you were talking about the, the spending up front, um, or inside village hall for, um, um, supplies, what about when we have, when we go over and, and, and services? Is there any, is there any watch group for that? Is that part of the spending freeze, basically?
Well, first of all, let me address the first thing, if you want to be included in this, Mr. Mayor, that's why we're having this discussion. Do you want to be included in this?
I would think that you would be included, Mayor, or something like that, especially if it's something that's essential, I mean, if someone comes up and says, I wanna buy X, Y, Z, and then can't, and then, and then the, um, I just need to know about it. I'm not saying I can make, I'm not saying I can make the decision, I just need to know about it.
So you want to be included so that you know about it?
And, and also.
And that's why we're having this discussion.
And also, and also be part of the decision, yes.
I have a comment.
Wait a minute, I am not, yeah, no, I'm not finished. I'm not. And the, what is the second thing you're asking me, when you're talking about services?
I'm talking about lawyer fees, um, I'm going to the, um, getting, um, equipment, um, getting, um, going over, um, certain preview, purviews of spending for outside, I mean, some things like that, 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 they're in the budgets, but when you get to that point, and you say, for instance, that your budget is a hundred thousand dollars for whatever, and you go over that, because that's another service, what do you do then? Who do you come to then, when, when you go over that?
Okay, did you?
Professional services, that's what I'm making clear.
And C, where it says the spending freeze shall exclude liability obligations such as bonds, debts, insurance, and insurance, operational expenses shall be limited to the maximum manual increases provided in labor and contracts. Okay, but you're talking about a service.
Yes.
Like, give me an example of what you're talking about.
I'm talking about professional, professional services.
Okay, so you wanted to say professional services as well?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we should, we should take, take a look at our professional services, and we got a lot of them, I mean, we got different types of professionals, not just the lawyers all the time, we got other things that we have to, um, look into.
I, I guess the part that I struggle with the most is that, um, so when something shows up on accounts payable that we vote on every two weeks, on that list, we really don't know, so as long as it isn't within, within their budget, I guess we really don't know whether like they should have bought that or not have bought that, based on the spending freeze. Like, how do we know that, um, a pair of boots was needed to be bought versus it could have waited, you know, until three months? Like, I, I, it just, it's a lot of gray area in this to me, and it's like, I don't know how you can really, how we really track it, because once something shows up on accounts payable, we assume that everything that shows up is something that we actually needed, or was one, or, 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 or was, uh, was, was needed to ask for, so therefore, I just don't know, how do we track it? It just, it's a big gray area to me, that's just me.
Okay.
Did you talk to Mr. Finch?
Yes, I did talk to Mr. Finch. Yes, I did talk to Mr. Finch.
Trustee Grant, and when my conversations with, uh, Mr. Finch, this is my understanding what should be going on. Because we just talked to Public Works and, and also Robinson Engineering, just hypothetically. You know, we had a hundred thousand dollars to spend, okay? Thirty-six thousand dollars in that, from Robinson Engineering was, was committed, but wasn't paid out yet, cause they hadn't done the service or something, but they know it's thirty-six thousand dollars that's coming in. So we had like seventy-four thousand dollars left. So, at that point, we wanted to do some additional, uh, things, the Public Works wanted to do additional stuff. And so what Kevin did was give us a list of, of things that could be done, and he put in all the prices and, you know, if it went over seventy-four thousand dollars, uh, Mr. Finch and also the village administrator sat there and say, oh, well, you only have this amount of money, we don't, we can't do that until next year or so. So, it's all in the, uh, budget versus actual, uh, report that they give us, that we should know about how much, uh, we have out there, and then how much, uh, we're going to, uh, use for projects that we, we know that we committed to, but we haven't got the money for yet. So, if you follow what I mean, that generally what happens, if we go outside of the budget, we generally talk to Mr. Finch, or the finance director, whoever it's gonna be, and he'll come back and he'll let us know, well, you, you spent all this, we don't have any more money, you know? That's, that's the way I understand it. So, it's all the reports that, uh, the finance director gives us.
Um, trustee, if you go out of budget, in other words, if you spend past your budget, the amount you have to come back and have, and make an amendment to the budget, and that has to be done through the trustee.
Well, not just.
You can't make, you can't make that, you can't make that decision.
Let me, let me, I'm sorry. Okay, let me clarify, because a lot of times, uh, the finance director can move money from different line items, as I understand it, you know? And if, uh, now, this is what I understand, now, since everybody up here seem to be a budget expert. But anyway, he told me that he can move money from different line items if the money's available. So that all depends on the trustee or whoever has to sit down to talk to the finance director, find out what's money out there, how much is gonna be, um, needed for the projects they want, and how much money is, you know, that we could spend? That's the way I understand it.
Since within that particular budget for that particular department, yes, you can. But if you go over budget in your department, it has, that budget that you went over, that particular department has to come back and ask for an amendment, in the hope that they get to that point before they go over budget.
I didn't say budget, I said line item within the budget, I did not say budget. I said line item within the budget.
So, so I guess, just to clarify, so.
No, go ahead, trustee.
It is, so we're talking, are we talking about specific line items or the budget total?
I'm talking about deficit, uh, that example I just gave you, I was talking about line items. Like, seven-twelve, I think is like day labor or something, and seven-twenty-six, but seven-twenty-six had like a hundred thousand in it. Seven-twelve only had like nine thousand. So, uh, if the money's available, we could take, he can move money from seven-twenty-six to seven-twelve. That's a accounting thing.
Oh, okay, so I just want to make, I just want to just break it down. So, let's just say we're talking about Public Works. Let's say they have fifty dollars in the water department to spend, fifty dollars in the sewer department. Their total budget is a hundred dollars, fifty-fifty. Let's just say they spend sixty in the water department, they only have forty dollars left in water, cause it can't go over a hundred dollars, right? So what this ordinance is trying to do is say that the Public Works can't go over a hundred dollars. Is that what it's, is that what it's saying? Or is that saying in total, or is saying this line item cannot go over fifty dollars? I would think that the total number is what matters, because to the mayor's point, you can't go over the total number, because then you have to come back before the board and amend your budget. We have to vote on that. So I think that, okay, so that needs to be explicit in here, cause I didn't take that from this. So I had, you know, we had, sorry, it took so long to get there, but that wasn't clear in this to me. So, if you could add some, I'll continue some language that says, if a certain department exceeds their budget, now, also, I guess this word is tricky, so, for example, are we talking about the budget in total? Or is this gonna be like on a month-to-month basis? So like, for example, uh, in the first month of the year, we should only be at, let's just say, fourteen percent of the budget. Now, what if they're at twenty-five percent of their total budget? Does that matter?
They're over budget.
Right, so are you saying at that point, they can't spend any more money? Or are you saying that, because you're not gonna find out the total budget to the end of the year, when the whole year is done, that's when you, then it's too late. Then you're gonna say, oh, well, we should have stopped you a long time ago. So, are we saying that on a month-to-month basis, we're gonna say, you can only spend up to X percent, and if you are over X percent, you're done spending, we'll come back and revisit next month and see how you're looking? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, looking at this, where it says, in the event the department has, is, is getting near to where they're exceeding their budget, this is where they get the approval from the finance director, but are they getting reports every month as to where they're sitting with their budget?
So, the village administrator, I'm sorry, the finance director should be sending out the budget schedules to us, and she, he should be having monthly meetings with the department heads about where they stand. So, now, if he's holding to those meetings, and everybody's in attending, and they understand where they stand, I would think this shouldn't be an issue. But now, that's a different story if they're not having these monthly meetings, that's a different story. We need to make sure that they, they're having these meetings first, because that's, that's their true test of, are they, you know, within the budget? Because I don't think it's fair, let's just say that, we know that, I'm just using an example, police need ammunition. We got a good sale, we're gonna buy ten thousand units of ammunition right now, because it's on sale. It's gonna last us the whole year, but according to our budget, it's gonna seem like we're over budgeted already within month one, because we bought so much of it. But yeah, we still have eleven more months to go in the fiscal year, and therefore, by the time we get to eleven months, we'll be at our budget, but just right now, it seems like we, we're not, we're over budget. So, I mean, it's a, it's really a gray area, I just wanted to kind of see like where, where we're going with this, if that makes sense.
I mean, if they're locked down with their budget, then why?
Right, so i- if they're gonna stick, stay true to their budget, in total, without coming back to the board and saying, hey, I need to increase, and I don't think we need this. But if we're gonna hold them to their budgets, but however, we also need to make sure they're in these monthly meetings every month, with Mr. Finch, the village administrator, and all the department heads, and hey, this is where you are. You're X percent, this is too, this is, you're too far over your budget, slow it down some. I think those meetings would be more effective than having a policy in place or ordinance, and saying that, hey, you're on a spending freeze.
Well, if you choose not to have, I mean, this is why we come to the board, I mean, this, this came before the committee, so this is up, of course, up to the board. So if you need, if, if there's other changes you want to see, I mean, could you also email me too?
Okay.
With this, but I did write down.
That was the only thing I had was the fire services. I just wanna know, are we staying on top of that? And if we are not, I don't wanna come at the end and say, okay, we, we budgeted for X amount of money, and now we're exceeding that, then what do we do? You know, so, but, okay, that, that was it, but, um, I'm hoping that the department heads, that's, that's their job to make sure that they're, that they're within their budget. And if they have a question, they should come to the finance director and the village administrator and say, hey, wait a minute, I wanna get this, where am I at?
Right.
And they should do, that's their job to do that.
Well, would you, would you choose not to have this ordinance?
I mean, I don't have a problem, spending freeze is, makes sense if you do it, if you do it across the board, not just for the employees, but everything else that needs to be done, and that's why you have a budget.
Right.
You have a budget in place where you could, and it's really paper and, and numbers, but it still gives you an outline, a map to know where you should be. And, but to say, okay, well, and that was one of the, um, examples I was kind of frowning on. Now, okay, well, if you got a hundred thousand dollars to spend for your department, and you spend thirty-five thousand the first month, it's incoming upon you to, 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 uh, either quit spending, or you, if you notice that you, if you know you're gonna go over, don't wait until you go over, come back and say, hey.
Right.
That should be, that should be, and you should come back a long time before, because if not, then you should get disciplined for not coming to say, because the village does go on, the services gotta go on. That's your job as a department head to watch and make sure that you don't go over budget. And if you have to go over budget because it was an emergency, bring it to the board and say, hey, I gotta make an amendment, because I can't go further.
And then, i- if a certain line item is over budget, they should be able to explain why. So, we, we did have to purchase, uh, so many air packs because of this, because they're gonna expire next month. So those are things that they need to be explaining to us, in those budget meetings, so, uh, that they should be having every month. So, I, I, I like the intent, I think it's a good idea, I just think that we just need to go about it like a little differently, and just to make them accountable, but we don't need anything on paper per se, but we should hold them accountable every month in these meetings.
Okay. You have a question?
Okay.
I'm just gonna bring it back to the ordinance review.
That's the spending freeze, right?
Yeah.
Hire, I'm sorry, hiring freeze is next.
Okay, um, you'll see on this one, um, what's in red is what we're adding, and then you'll see we lined out. So, in A, it's no new, full, or part-time employment positions shall be created or filled unless already budgeted for in the current fiscal year. B is no position becoming vacant through attrition, for example, by way of retirement, shall be refilled until such time as. The department head makes a written recommendation to the village board explaining why it's necessary that set position be refilled for village operations. And then, two is lined out, so number three is gonna be number two. The refilling of the position is approved by the majority of the board of trustees. And that's all we did with this ordinance, that actually you can't go in and start doing hiring if you're not in the budget.
Okay, and then again, okay, is it? And I see that, you know, by the board of trustees, so you're not, so it's not the recommendation of the mayor with the consent of the board, or is it just?
We can add that, if you want recommendation by the mayor.
That should be, if you, if you're gonna be doing a hiring like that, yeah, that should be in there.
So I guess, I would, to this one, I would ask, who's gonna make the determination, um, whether we will add some, so in the upcoming budget year, whether we need two more people at the front desk, or four more Public Works people? Like, who's gonna make that determination? Because I would think that if we decide that, let's say we need three people for Public Works, um, and we budget for that.
Right.
Who's gonna, who's gonna, I guess, give that, okay, are we gonna say?
We're gonna budget, when we do our budget. When we do our budget, if we say, okay, we want three, but then all of a sudden, after the budget's done, it's passed in, say, Mr. have to come before the board. Recommendation of the mayor and the board. So you can't just go in and just start hiring people. If we budgeted for three and you want five, you can't just go in and get two more people. So one of the things is you have to come before the board, because we've seen that positions have been put, that have been put out there and never came before the board. So you wanna make sure that if you're not at the budget, then you have to come before the board to get approval of these positions.
Now, what about the position that you, that's out there, um, on the website? You have, you have a part-time, um?
They were budgeted.
Okay.
Parks and Recs was already budgeted, if you look at our budget, anything that we had on the website was budgeted for. Finance director, those are in the budget, so that's not an issue. This is to go, to go ahead, or you can't just hire without it being in our budget.
Question?
I don't have an answer, I wanna go home. Yeah, I'm tired.
Actually, I was addressing the mayor, but that's. So, um, this applies to no new, full, or part-time employment position shall be created or filled unless already budgeted for. So, what happens in the event that we do decide we need a new position in whatever department? We need to come before the board and say, we've decided we need to get another person at the front desk, or we need another Public Works person. Is that where this is being addressed, that no new, full, or part-time positions shall be created or filled unless already budgeted for? I think we need to say, there could be a time where we need a new position. If it's not budgeted for, where is it addressed? It would come before the, the mayor and the board of trustees.
You're saying that this, if you want to create a new position, you're saying that it should, that should be determined by the, by the consent? Is that what you're saying?
Right. It says, and what's, it says unless already budgeted for in the current fiscal year. What I'm saying is, if there's some, if there's a position that we wanna create, that's not already budgeted for in the current fiscal year, we need to insert that now. We need to make some type of note, that we may be creating a position that's not in the current fiscal year budget, but we would have to come back to the mayor and the board to say, we've, a department head would say, I find a need for this additional person, I'd like to add this person, and they're not budgeted for at this time, which would require a budget amendment.
That's all.
Exactly, which we understand that.
If it's not in the budget, and you create that, then you have to get the amendment, and the amendment would have to show where you're gonna pull the money from.
But I don't see that it's stated in here that we may be creating a new position that's not already in the budget. It says unless already budgeted for the current fiscal year. We have to allow for the fact that we may need to add something to the budget, if the need arises, is my opinion.
Anybody have any questions?
About, about that, about that, no, but, so I do, so, the effective date is gonna be once we, once it's passed, um, if, if it's passed. So, is this something that's gonna go forever? Or is it something that's gonna go fiscal year to fiscal year? Because I think that should be stated in this ordinance as well.
You can always remove it at any time, you know, you can rescind, you can, you, yeah, amend. I mean, do you wanna see a date in there, or?
Well, I mean.
You wanted to read, it's gonna be an effective forever until you change it. You know, until you go in and say, okay, we want, we want to rescind this ordinance. You know, the next administration may want to rescind it. No. But if you wanna see a date in there? You want a date on it? No?
We're moving back, yes.
She's saying, no. So we'll hold this one as well, and I'll take it back to, um, the committee. And last but not least. No. No, cause there was a question on it. We need to add language to it.
And last one is the amended article two, chapter seventy-eight.
The rehab ordinance, and per Mr. Finch and also trustee Brewer, because she's, she's working on a policy and procedure. And one of the things is that the rehab water, they don't have meters, so there's no way to track them. So, I, I gave this to Mr. Finch for his approval to read as such. Effective upon passage, all Salk Village rehabilitation property must have a meter installed before any work is done. The costs of the meter are as follows. Half inch, five eighths inch, and three quarters are two hundred dollars plus a non-refundable fifty-dollar administrative fee. Now, this is something that Mr. Finch, we didn't change anything else in the ordinance, but that, he wanted this stated in this, because that way they can keep track of the rehab water, instead of a straight pipe, now they now have a meter.
So.
I'm just.
They're still paying seven fifty a day, so.
But I, I think.
You know what I mean, it's, it's gotta be addressed.
But I think sometimes they lose track of how long they had it, and sometimes they had it forever. Some people out there have rehab water right now.
They can only have it for like thirty days.
Well, supposedly thirty days, right? They're supposed to go out and then kind of take care of it and switch, cut it off.
It says right in here, a maximum of sixty, and a minimum of thirty.
No, I, I know what it says, I don't think we always follow the process, that's what I'm saying.
That's what's happened.
So, but also.
I think the main thing is people don't live without it here.
Right, so, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question though. I thought commercial meters were a different price than residential.
They are.
So.
We were, we were never given the price of the commercial, these are like the three that they use.
So what size is the commercial?
About, uh, one and a half.
So, I think that we either need to take that word "commercial" out?
Please.
I know, I'm sorry. Okay, so I mean, are we gonna add "commercial" in rather? Because.
And we could do that, because I've been trying to get a price for the commercial, and I've, I've not gotten an answer as to what it is.
They're close to five hundred.
It's how much?
Close to five hundred.
To get a commercial meter.
For a commercial meter, but depending on where it's at, we usually bore the cost for that sometime. If it never had one in there. So, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know why.
So you're saying?
That's cause I asked Kevin about, if they had to change out of somebody, somebody's, uh, commercial property, and their height. They read different, things like that.
Why don't we bet the cost for a commercial?
My thing is, um, before occupancy or, uh, water accounts established, the meter has to be installed. Because they're paying seven fifty a day, plus a non-refundable.
But what happens if they move somebody in?
Well, they're gonna do that no matter what.
That's what I'm saying.
You know that.
But at least we, at least we, 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 I mean, like you said.
The other thing, remember when they were stealing all the copper and that? They were breaking in and actually removing the meters and stealing the piping. So a lot of the investors didn't wanna put, get the meter in right away until they were ready for occupancy.
But when they go in for rehab water, they should, when public works goes in there, they should see if there's a meter or not, and let the village hall know.
Right, but a lot of times, we don't get a chance to get in there. And what was happening before, we were just getting, um, what do you call it?
Terminated.
Estimated, estimated, estimated readings, and we didn't...
Yeah, they, they would drive nails into the meters.
Oh, there's a lot of things they do, so...
They do a lot of stuff.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think we should, I think, it's up to you, it's up to you guys.
Do you want it to add "commercial"?
I, I would like to add "commercial" just to have it.
You gotta sign the price up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Maybe we can ask Mr. Waller the price of the commercial meter. Uh, or we could just say $500, I don't, I don't know, if that's what the mayor thinks it, maybe we just put that in there.
We wanna verify.
Oh, yeah, let me find the right price, then we can add that.
Yeah, we wanna verify.
Yeah.
And then we'll add that, but the rest is fine?
Yep.
Okay. Um, if that's all we need to do is add the commercial, then can we put it on for next week? Because I think I could find out within the next day or so, I'm getting it. Put it, yeah, to be loaded on. Thank you. And that ends mine.
Um, next item is, uh, public comment. If everybody's still awake. All questions and comments directed to the mayor, each speaker. Each speaker may be, um, commenting on any matter of the county. To the business of the village, each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak. Uh, three minutes, and may not engage in debate, commentary, plasma, and bubbles, and I will answer all questions at the end. Please state your name.
Judy Cast here. First of all, I would like to thank you for looking into the, um, disability electronic door opener. As of tonight, um, the one coming into the building does not work. But the one going out of the building does work. So it's half fixed. Secondly, there was a little bit of confusion tonight. When I came in, I got a, um, agenda and the accounts payable together, and, uh, sat down and started going over it to see what everything was, only to find later, after you came out of the, um, closed session, that it didn't follow the agenda. Nothing followed the agenda. One, this one with the accounts payable is three pages, and then there's a two-page one. And the three-page one that's with accounts payable does not have Maggie Jar on it to speak. And it was difficult for me, because I was trying to follow an agenda that it was impossible to follow, only to find out that there were two agendas. So I, I, I think that confusion is something that, uh, should've been caught ahead of time. Thank you.
Kathy Betcher. Um, I wanna touch on a couple of things. One is the trees. Your quote for two thousand or thereabouts, did that include stump grinding? I just recently, not that long ago, had a tree removed, and it was thirty-five hundred, and I understand that it's because I only had one, but it was a massive tree. But I also had to pay $500 in addition for the stump to be grinded, down to the ground. So that's just one question that I'd like to have you check on when you get your, your quotes. Then I'd like to find out, I know, we all know about the shootings and everything that have been going on. Um, and we had code red supposed to be up and running. There have been several things that I have, should've been alerted to. No alerts. We need to get that code red up and running. I don't wanna be out walking the street and find out that there's something going on where I am, and then I'm right in the middle of a shootout or whatever is going on. So, can we please work on getting code red up and running? Next thing. Next thing I'd like to find out about. We spend countless money on a Christmas tree, on all kinda things that are really not important. I think, and I'm just throwing this out here, since there was a forty-dollar stapler a month, how about if we get a banner that celebrates the kids that won Nationals for kindness? I think, you know what? There are several adults in this village that could learn something from those children. How wonderful are they? We need to celebrate that. How about if we get a banner that we can hang across where we hang? The, um, Christmas, I think Mr. Williams gave me his. We can hang it where the, the Christmas lights go. And be proud of our kids. They did something to be proud of, how about if we show them that we're proud of them? Do something to celebrate them. It was a big deal, and we got a little blurb in, in the paper. Come on. These kids didn't even know they were being celebrated, until the day they got to the, the school and found out. And that was wonderful. But I think we need to celebrate them as a village. Be proud of our children. Thank you.
Diane Sad. Thank you. I have several questions. They're pending for forensic audit. Uh, my first question is, why is it so imperative that a forensic audit be conducted? The second part of that is, how many years back will it cover? And if it's less than five years, what's the purpose? Right? And why are we spending so much money on an audit, when it's apparent that the money could be better spent making the village more livable, by making more needed repairs and upgrades? Why can't the money be allocated? The money that's allocated for this ought to be used to say, for example, put in more streetlights. The street I live on is dark. And I think more streetlights in this village would make it feel a lot safer. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
John Hinko. Executive session again. Yeah, I think we've had a little executive sessions for about the last eight meetings. And I know you've got to do business, but, you know, the people out here, that's what we got you here for, to do the business, but not to keep us hostage here for an hour, hour and a half, to do business that you should be doing. It could be done at the end of the session, where we ain't, we ain't bothered with it. I, I just don't understand, I, I, like I say, I asked you a couple times, take hands, you would find out how many people here really would like to see it at the end of the session. I don't know why we can't do that, but I would maybe ask one of the trustees, something, talk with the lawyer, is there a legal way that we could go ahead and make it a, a, a done, or whatever, a change in rules, to have that at the end of the session? I, I would love to see that done. One other thing, uh, I happen to take a walk down Jeffrey Avenue from the library to, I don't know, about two blocks, three blocks down. Sixteen cars I've seen on the street. You know how many of them sixteen cars had village stickers on them? Not a one. Not a one, and we're looking at money. How much money are we losing because of people are not paying for village stickers? I mean, I might as well just take my five cars next year and not buy stickers for them, and wait and see if they catch me. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, I, I mean... Why don't, you look at some way of selling permits or something that people can park on the street without a permit, make it a dollar a night or something like that. You'll capture more than the sticker money. Just because they're living in an apartment, that don't mean they don't, shouldn't be. If they're living there, they should have a village sticker to park their car on the village street. And if they're not gonna do that, the village should be able to do something about it. Not just, well, not do anything. I would like to see the village start working in ways of making it fair for everybody. You know, because I pay for all my stickers, I, I... It just pisses me off, there, there's a lot of people that don't pay them, that don't get them. And you gotta have, look under the records there and see that you're probably losing a lot of money on stickers that people are not buying nowadays. That's something you should be looking into. Thank you.
Pat Couch. Earlier I heard you mention about POs, when you have a purchase order, and you're limiting it to like an item $2,000 or so. I think you need to readdress that. I think if you're gonna spend our money, you should put a PO on every single thing that you purchase. That way you can find that PO matches whatever you're buying. If it's $5, put a PO on it, so you know Joe Blow spent $5 on something. You can match that PO, that would be a smart thing. Dog licenses, that's another issue. We're losing money because of hundreds and hundreds of dogs, and every day, you hear the police are out here with a stray dog. They have no licenses, we're losing money on that. Forensic audit, I applaud you, trustees, for finally approving a... Finance Director, Assistant, uh, interim wouldn't have brought it up to begin with. Whatever he finds, Godspeed, it needs to be done. But it finds it awfully strange that this has been talked about all this time, and now today, of all days, it's on the agenda. And now we see road repairs. Where did that come from, all of a sudden? Road repairs came up. Why wasn't that talked about long ago? Now we wanna use that extra money that's in there for road repairs and such. Also, when the board puts a hold on a check, that should be held from the accounts payable, to hold this check for X, Y, and Z, to pay that payment later. And if that payment gets paid, that needs to be addressed. Why would that happen? And also, tonight is embarrassing. The disrespect from the village clerk to the trustee or, shake your head, Margaret, I'm talking about you, is sad. Every one of you need to take a lesson in self-respect for each other, and direct toward your trustees. You don't talk to your trustees that way, that's absurd. So, dog licenses, get on them, thank you.
Oh, okay. Um, item about the, um, the door. It's not broke. It was, it was stopped for a reason, um, because sometimes that door does, um, not lock. Or it locks on its own, and if someone tries to open the handicap part of it, it'll burn their motor out. But I tested it, and that's why one is on, but I'm trying to implement that every night, when the village halls close down, that they shut those switches off, and when they come in in the morning, they come back on. That's gonna have to be a practice that they're gonna have to do every day. But that's the reason why one is opening, the other one is not opening. But what happened, the reason why they were cut off, and that's a sign by the main switch inside the village, as you come into the, uh, office part of it, because if that door were to somehow, which it does every now and then, lock itself, and you press that handicap button, that thing will continue to keep trying to open up, and it'll burn that motor out. So that's why that was done, but we're trying, I'm gonna see if, uh, I'm gonna implement, and then cutting it off every night. As far as the trees are concerned, um, does it include stump grinding? This was, and I stated, this was an estimated. Grinding is, is part of the, um, um, process. However, with those many trees, uh, if we can, we have stump grinding. If we can get out there and do that, and when they do that, it takes a minute to do that, or it's cheaper for them to do it, and, and the way that they do it, they, like everything else, they use it by the circumference, so... Depends on how wide the tree is in diameter. That depends on, because the stump grinding is $5 per inch. So, uh, that's part of the, you know, depending on, um, how many large trees, as I stated. The reason why the price is so cheap, or cheaper than what you pay, because we're doing it value. Code red, if you, if you want, I don't know if you signed up for it, but you have to sign up for code red. If you signed up for code red, you're not getting it, then please come onto the village and we'll find out why you're not getting it. But you have to sign up for code red yourself, and, um, then we'll, we'll go from there. Okay, so, I'll be, but if she signs up for it. Okay. Okay, then we need to find out what's wrong. Um, as far as a banner, for kids, children, I mean, I... Sometimes maybe you should go to the, the village, I mean, you should go to the school district and, and talk to them about it, because that's a separate tax about it. And that's a good idea. When something like that does happen, there should be something up. A warning or recognizing the persons or something like that. And it should go somewhere, you know, but that's... If I were to do something like that, I mean, I have no problem with it, but we do have a, a school district, and all we can do is ask them to see what, what they can do, maybe come to gather something to that site. That's a good idea. Forensic audit. It was voted on tonight. There were comments made. It was voted on. I mean, um, hopefully we can get some other things taken care of, but the forensic audit is gonna move forward, and as I said, it's gonna be at, at least two years right now, and the board knows what they voted on, it was not done at the last minute, but, you know, they know it is what they voted on, so that's what we have to, to move on and, and take care of. I, the next one, as far as executive session, I think, I thought I talked about it the last time. These meetings are business meetings. I mean, I understand that you're here to hear what goes on. But a lot of times, especially tonight, we have a person here that was actually on the clock. And to let them be here until ten o'clock, they're just sitting here getting paid for that. I'm trying to get that person out so we can go on. It's not that I'm sliding anyone here, but we also had to be cautious of what, you know, a person is sitting there, and they, and they have items on them. We went over, the reason why we may have went over it a little longer, because there's things that need to be explained, and there's questions that were being asked. It's not that we go over on purpose, but, and they do, believe me, they do think, they do think about the residents that are out here, but it's still a business, like I said, this is a, this is a business meeting. And we're trying to conduct the business, because we don't get the, uh, we don't get something like this done every week. We wouldn't be able to afford that. But, um, when we do have the, the lawyer there for executive session, we do try to, uh, ask the questions at that time. Rather than, because they're gonna bill then, but now if they ask them on the phone, it's still on there. So, um... Purchase orders on every item, that's something to be thought about. A lot of paperwork, but it's still something that doesn't make sense. As far as the, uh, village stickers, people still, they can get away, but still, there's, like, people are gonna get caught. I get phone calls all the time, I forgot to pay this village sticker, and can I get a, can I get a, you know, a break on it? And they send, I've, I've got one the other day, that was nine months ago. So, you know, it's... So, you know, it's, it, we don't, you know, we, we don't target people, but you're right. We should be driving down the street trying to see, and then see. But we have to find out address, if, if that address is related to where they stay at. And if it is, then they should get, uh, a ticket because they do live in the village. Yes, you're right, dog licenses, we are losing money. Um, the last item, and I stated that before about respecting one another. As I said, this is not, this is, it has this shame that sometimes it does become a circus, because everybody has their own opinion, everybody feels a certain way about what they want to do, and then forget to say, wait a minute, hold it, and then just blurp back in, in and out. Well, as I said before, when it happens again, I will ask for a recess, and I will stop to meet. And so we can learn, and I stated it before, Lady was right. You go to the schools, you see them. They learn. As they get older, they get into what we have right now, and that's any child. That's any child. They don't come in the world being a certain way. They learn that as they get old. With that being said, um, comments from the, uh, Mayor Trustee? Trustee Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next event for the Public Events Committee will be March 14th. Cook County Treasurer's Office offers help with property tax problems, assisting homeowners searching for $79 million in available refunds, applying for $44 million in missing senior citizen property tax exemptions, and check if their property taxes are delinquent. That will be March 14th, here from 11 to 1. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out. That's all I have.
Trustee Bell?
Safety Committee's next meeting will be the 17th of March, here at the Rotunda so far, 11 a.m. That's all I have.
Trustee Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no comment.
Trustee Duzansky?
The Housing Committee will meet on March 25th at 7:00 o'clock here in the boardroom. That concludes my report.
Trustee Brouwer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to reiterate that, um, it was recommended by the Finance Director and also the majority of the trustees to do a forensic audit. Now, we have been going through this for, uh, last three years, I guess, two or three years. And we have known, and those people who've been around here a while, have known that this has been a problem for the last 10, 15 years and stuff. We just don't have a handle on our finances. And since, um, I've been in office since May 17, we have had transition of Finance Director who was, uh, fired. We had a, a treasurer who was promoted to the Finance Director who believed in operational transfers. Uh, we have Mr. Finch coming in, trying to, uh, clean up everything that everybody else did. So it was too many cooks in that pot for us to have a clear-cut, um, um, clear-cut balance of what's actually needed to be done and what be done. Nobody's accusing anybody of any fraud or anything like that. These are things we want to know so we could make informed decisions, and that's what trustees are for. Since we don't get reports on a regular basis, we starting to get them now since Mr. Finch is here. Before then, we weren't getting any reports. We couldn't get access to documents. That all tells us that somebody was hiding something and we couldn't find it. So the question is, needs to be known, is that we're not accusing anybody of anything. We just want to know where our finances is, and that's what I think, do believe you guys inflected us for. And now, it really makes me sort of wonder why, after all this time, now the mayor wants to talk about doing infrastructure repair. He wants to do, use $588,000 out of the, uh, reserve fund to do these repairs, even though I know it needs to be done. Believe me, some of these places he talked about needs to be done. But it seems like to me, this is just a stalling tactic, so we won't go into that forensic audit and find out just really what's going on with that money. Because if we had the money, that, this $588,000 that he proposed that we had, we could've got all this stuff fixed a long time ago. We should've had the money there. We should've been, trustees should've known, well, okay, these houses need to be fixed, or these trees need to be cut down. We should've had the money. But we don't know, because we don't get any reports. And that's the end of my report.
Trustee Yarom, time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next ordinance review committee meeting will be March 9th at 6:30 p.m. here in the Rotunda. And we're always looking for volunteers, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna be going to a meeting, um, this week, and I'm going to bring back the findings about how to handle and how the municipalities, municipalities are gonna handle if there is an outbreak of, uh, coronavirus. I'm going to bring literature back. I'm also going, there's going to be a meeting in Robbins. I'll get it to the trustees, I just got it today. There's gonna be a meeting in Robbins, a town hall meeting, to discuss, and then also how you could, not detect, but kind of, you know, if you have these symptoms, you may or may not. That's what, that's how it is. But I'm gonna bring the information back, because, um, there were like three cases found in, uh, Cook County. And at first, it was just one, now it's three, so, and that was, oh, this has been just a week. So that's something that, um, that we need to know. At least you can know what to look for, and at least we need to know what we need to do with, um, municipalities to, uh, to get people to, um, you know, what they, what they need to do, and if anything like that happens. So, you know, because they're closing schools down in some areas that have, and have a widespread of it. So that's something that I will bring back to the board. And the last, lastly, I, I appreciate the, the comments, but I don't appreciate the accusations. But that's, that's the way it is, and that's, that's, you know, I, I don't mind being, being that person, because I'm bigger than that. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to, it will be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.